Yeah, I know, just realized it too.
I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, April 8, 2015 at 7:03. And can we get members present?
Joseph Atide, Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Munufo Liainga Anawahi.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Shaquille Ali.
Here. And we have students from Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
And we have a request to change the order of the agenda and move the Spelling Bee to the first presentation. You got that note?
Which one?
Me, right? Do I come up yet?
All right. Mine doesn't say that, does it?
You don't have to revise?
No, I don't have it.
All right. We're moving this one. Yes. All right. You want to take mine?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm making a motion. Did we have it already? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And now, Dina Doos, Assistant Principal of Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School and District Facilitator for the Spelling Bee will introduce the 2015 Spelling Bee Grade Level Winners and the District Spelling Bee Champion.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's been my pleasure this year to co-facilitate the District Spelling Bee. I enjoy it thoroughly and I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to continue to be the District Facilitator. This year, I was very fortunate to have two co-facilitators who are in our district's administrative intern program, Greg Konzer and Kate Armstrong. And I am going to be turning over in just a moment to our co-facilitator, Mr. Konzer, the remaining portion of the presentation to introduce our wonderful students to you this evening. But I did want to take the opportunity on behalf of all the students who participated in the Spelling Bee all across the district, not only the site bees but the district bee, all of our staff members across the district, our administrators, and families and teachers, and thank the district for supporting the Spelling Bee once again this year. A special thanks to our employee volunteers and board member volunteers without whom we could not have helped the bee. I'd like to personally thank Marie Brizuela, Rebecca Douglas, Sanim Kulik, Kathy Kelly, Rosio Lopez, Stephanie Martinez, Ladonna Barasa, Debbie Borda, Jovi Patron, Marilyn Newman, Linda Flynn McNezby, Gay Gardner Burke, and Jane Brett Hauer. Thank you to superintendent and board and all of our volunteers. And I think that we all need a round for supporting the bee. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce again Mr. Konzer, and he'll proceed with our introductions this evening. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, and I want to thank the board for having us all here today. I've been running my school Spelling Bee for the last five years, and it's one of our best events, and it always brings the whole school together for something so positive. And so I'm glad to be able to do this here today, as well as thanking the district for having this admin internship program that I get to, you know, shadow principals and be part of this district in such a huge way. And now, without further ado, I think I'll announce our winners. From 4th grade, our winner was Juliana Pablo. From 5th grade, our winner was Nicole Lacanlale. Our 6th grade winner was Adele Newcom. Our 7th grade winner was Kalen Gappus. And our 8th grade winner was Noor Apuzriha. And congratulations to Noor, who was our district-wide winner. So congratulations to all our students, and again, thank you for having us here today.
All right, thank you.
The students would stay up here because we still have a couple presentations to make to you. So we have certificates being presented to you by our school board members. Has been the tradition of the Rotary Club, we have a dictionary to award to each of our students today. Do you want to present it? Rotary Club members?
Save this one for after debate.
And the 5th grade winner is Nicole Lacanlale.
And congratulations to the 7th grade winner, Kalen Gappus.
And to our 8th grade winner, Noor. You've got to help me with this one. Gappusari?
And for those of you who remember, Noor was the winner at last year's district-wide, was it last year's district-wide winner and 7th grade champion. So congratulations, double Noor.
We also have certificates for those who helped lead the pledge.
So we have a certificate of appreciation for Michael Sagum.
I have a certificate of appreciation for Luke Mar.
Raquel Camacho?
Yes.
Would any board members like to say anything?
Well, I'd like to say I attended the Spelling Bee and also participated in it. And for some of you that might have been nervous up there, I was nervous when I was working in it. So, you know, I can imagine how you felt. But I will say that it was one of the best organized-run Spelling Bee that we've had. And we've had, you guys were wonderful. All of you were great. And towards the end, it was going back and forth and back and forth. It was, it was like exciting. But you're all wonderful. You did a great job. You should all be proud and hope that we'll see those of you there be in our district next year. Hopefully, we'll see you back again. Great job.
I just want to congratulate you all. My 11-year-old has dyslexia, so I know how hard it is to read and be able to spell words correctly. And I just want to congratulate you all for representing us so well and your families. So hats off to you all. And to all of the teachers and organizers, thank you very much for your job well done. Thank you.
The Spelling Bee is definitely one of the key events during our year, during our school year. So I want to thank all the people that put it together and let's keep it going by any means necessary because it fosters this progression and this competition within kids to bring out the best in them. And I want to thank not only the parents and the teachers and the staff and the faculty, but also the kids. Stay competitive in life because one day you guys will be our leaders, and one day you guys will be sitting up here, creating the next generation of leaders. Stay competitive.
Congratulations once again. So are there any, or is there anyone who can explain the shirt that you're wearing? Or want to talk about that shirt? Is this next? Jumping the gun, huh? All right. Well, I guess we can give them one more round of applause then. So next, the Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School's Positive School Climate Curriculum and Next Level Academic Program. And we have Stephanie Martinez, Student Services Program Specialist, and James Parrish III, Principal of Benjamin Franklin. And I'll turn it over to you.
So just happy that we're here today just to kind of recognize some of the work that we've been doing at Ben Franklin with our Positive School Climate Program. Very fortunate, you know, to have worked with Stephanie Martinez for several years at Ben Franklin as our school counselor. And in May of 2014, our school, along with her and our Positive School Climate Team, came together and was thinking about what can we do to engage our students in some conversations to help support them around a variety of different issues that adolescents deal with. And so with that, we came up with an advisory period at Ben Franklin, a pilot program. Stephanie's going to talk with you a little bit more in detail about that.
And we kind of piloted this year with Ben Franklin being the best place to be me at the beginning of the school year. We changed up our presentation that we do to students 6th, 7th, and 8th altogether about expectations that we have for their behavior and how we're going to support them and the programs that we have that support them. And so we piloted that kind of saying, and then we went ahead and made shirts, which is why we're wearing them today. And I'll have, the students are going to share out as well in a minute. But I kind of just wanted to go over what advisory is and who's on the committee that supports myself and Mr. Parrish with piloting this this year. It's myself, so I'm also in a different role this year, as I think most of you know, as student services for the district office. But I've still been working closely with Ben Franklin with this program and plan on to continue that throughout this year. But I couldn't do it without a team, of course. So I have Ora Smithers, who's a teacher, Lori Cummings, Luisa Santos, Ms. Doos, Mr. West, who's actually here, I'd like to recognize him, and Hillary Davis, the school counselor. And so with this team, we've come up with the kind of lesson plans that go along with the advisory topics that I'll go through in a second. So why advisory? The reason why we did it was because last year and the year before, we did a week-long program about bullying because that seems to be at the peak when it comes to middle-school-aged children. And so some of the data that we collected showed that oftentimes we're reacting to behavior instead of doing more preventative work. We also found that though 30% isn't that high, but 30% of our students did not feel safe reporting bullying to an adult. So we thought that was still concerning. That's still, you know, a lot of children that don't feel comfortable talking about it with adults, who are the ones who can help the most. 32% of our students said that they didn't feel safe telling on a student. The top five reasons for bullying were being overweight, being called a bad word related to gay, race, not being popular, and being weak. So we gave them about 12 options and kind of told them to rate their top, you know, choices, and that's what we got. And almost 50% of our students said that it was either happening every day to a few times a week. So we decided to expand. And this isn't just Ben Franklin, this is all middle schools. But we decided to really be intentional about what we were going to do. And the top places that it was occurring was not really in the classrooms. It was where they were at, but, you know, with, in large numbers with the least amount of supervision. So we also noticed that with bullying and with behavior, you do lose instructional minutes as well. And so that's really important to the teachers, us as educators. We want our kids to be learning and to be focused. So that's kind of what piloted this conversation with staff. And we put it to staff and thought about some things that we wanted to do. And TRP is doing a similar program because they have similar things going on. And so we took their ideas and made it our own. So what we decided as a staff and as a school was that we would take a school-wide approach so that it wouldn't just be those students who are being referred, but it would be everybody gets this education. Everybody gets an opportunity to discuss these topics that are so important to discuss as, you know, a child. And then we took the foundation of respect, responsibility, and relationships, and we really embedded that into our process. And of course, that's a work in progress, but that's what we're really trying to establish as a community and really using that word more often, a community, in our schools. And so what we did was we took the format of advisory from restorative justice practices. It's a ceremonial-type practice where there's an opening. We incorporated announcements because we're schools, so we still have to make announcements. So that's kind of our kickoff to the conversations. Then we move into guidelines and values, and we took some time to establish those at the beginning of the year. And then we move on to the discussion and activity. And then we always have a closing to kind of close up the conversation in a positive way. So the areas of school climate that we were really trying to address was, of course, adult relationships because we want to make sure that students feel like they can connect to adults on campus. So if they need anything or have questions about anything, that they're going to those folks who can support them in the best way. And to establish respect, to establish safety, to establish responsibility, really looking at we're all responsible at our schools. And to understand the skills that we're trying to teach them and to know how to apply it. So really not just talking about empathy, but telling them what it means, what it looks like, and how can you use your words to describe it. So really giving them practical things. So these are our activities or advisory topics that we've gone over so far this year. So as you can see, there's a ton of things that we've been covering, both academic and social-emotional. So grading systems, we kicked it off with talking about progress reports versus report cards because we have elementary transitioning into the middle school. And then we have community building, Lego, which is one of my favorites, Let's Get Organized. We do talk about refusal skills because we know that peer pressure is big. Moving on into November, we really focused on bullying and took a whole month of time, and even into December, to really go through that and talk about the different types and how to stand up to it. January, we talked about middle-school challenges, nutrition and exercise. Moving on down to SMART goals, celebrating culture. We had a big festival, multicultural night, and so we talked about that. And just today, we talked about self-advocacy. And so that was really teaching kids communication styles and how to get their needs met. So we're, yes.
So during the advisory, who's leading the lessons? Are all the teachers like coming up with their own?
No, so the team develops the lessons, and then we provide kind of coaching and teaching to the teachers at our bi-weekly meetings that we have. So we talk about the topics, we go through the lesson plan with them and provide them copies, and then I send out an email with it to them as well. So they have it with them at all times. And they also have a binder where they put all of their lessons. So right now, it's, you know, it's a work in progress. And, you know, I have a where are we now? We have great results. We just did a sample survey. We do plan to do a school-wide to really see its impact. But so far, the results are looking pretty good. But to me, the most powerful voice and change that I can ever see is hearing from an actual student. So today, they wrote something up and... And they're going to share about what advisory is to them and how it's impacted them.
Right.
Hello, my name is Luke Mar. I'm the 8th grade spirit point commissioner here at Ben Franklin. Advisory is pretty much a period of the day on Wednesday mornings. I'm here to talk about my favorite advisory period of this year. My favorite has been the refusal skills. It has taught me to say no many different ways and that if I feel uncomfortable, I don't have to do what everyone has to do. This has helped me go to high school so that I know that high school has many challenges and that things I might not want to do, so I can say no in different ways. For that day, we did a scenario, and this is probably one of my favorite moments in 8th grade, is we had a group of boys in the corner, and they asked one of the students, "Do you want a drink?", as a scenario. And he said, "No, I got to go home and make cookies with my mom." It was kind of a funny compliment. It was just trying to get away off his mind about drinking. That's the end of my presentation. I'll pass it on to Raquel.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Raquel Camacho, and I am the 8th grade president at Ben Franklin and also a part of the Falcon Cheer and Falcon Band. And an advisory topic we discussed is about gossiping. The impact of gossiping that establishes on the student, which is us, is not a feeling, is a feeling of sadness and a feeling a student does not want to feel. We discussed how gossiping and rumors are very similar because both are talking behind someone's back and both are about lies. We let, which leads to gossiping. By telling your friends about false information about someone. Learning about this lesson, there was a quote being used, one of my favorite quotes. Whoever gossips to you will gossip about you. This whole lesson taught me to remember to respect yourself because if you don't respect yourself, no one will. That's the end. Thank you.
I'm Michael Sagum, 8th grade secretary. Now, in advisory, we learned about SMART goals. Goals help us, will help keep us motivated and help make sure we're on track on our assignments. These goals personally help me organize myself and plan for the future ahead. This is just one thing we learned from advisory. We've also mentioned other subjects like bullying and teasing, drug consumption, and the fact that we should all be positive about ourselves and our backgrounds.
Good evening, my name is Jemima Mansada. I am the 7th grade treasurer and a member of Falcon Cheer at Ben Franklin Intermediate School. This year, we started a program, Advisory, which occurs every Wednesday before first period. Today, I will be talking about two topics that I will always take with me. The importance of getting to know each other and types of bullying. By getting to know each other, we can lessen the chance we have to judge others or bully them. Most of the times, those who bully other people judge them for how they dress, how they do in school, and even the people they hang out with. But with getting, but by getting to know each other, we can understand what they're going through. If we know their circumstances, then we can understand and respect them. But even then, there are times when we bully someone unknowingly. Part of the importance of having respect is knowing when we're going to fart. We may be teasing them about something or maybe talk about rumors that we think are insignificant, but really, it's too much. If I could take one thing from advisory, it would be the importance of knowing someone before judging them. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bea Shelby. I am the 6th grade vice president, and I'm in the Falcon Sinfonic Band at Ben Franklin Intermediate Middle School. At our school, there is a new program called Advisory. It happens every Wednesday, and we talk about different topics that happen in school and outside of school. The topic I will talk about is the value of a zero. A zero can bring your grade down drastically. Did you know it takes 19 As to get an A or a B? Knowing the value of a zero and the outcome reminds me to try with my best effort in homework and classwork. To me, the value of zero is a great thing to know for when you're checking your grades.
I just want to thank them because they're amazing. They did that last minute for me, so I'm really proud of them. They did a great job. But also just want to say, without the teachers doing this, this program wouldn't be what it is. And so I just want to mention that Ben Franklin teachers are working really hard, and there's a lot of credit due to them as well. So thank you.
All right, thanks for that presentation. You want to say something else?
It's the Next Level Academic Program.
Oh, all right, there we go.
Can I steal some of the time from the Spelling Bee? Eight minutes, thank you. All right, well, when we think about, you know, we talked a little bit about advisory, working with our students. The Next Level Academic Program has really been focused on working with our parents, you know. So we know that we have a lot of different stakeholders. Getting parents to come out to meetings and what drives them is, you know, one of our challenges that we all do. And so, you know, two of our subgroups, African-American students and our Latino, Latina families, are two subgroups at our particular site that we really wanted to focus on and help. And so I engaged with Dr. Jamal Cooks over here in 2013, 2014 about some ideas around how can we come up with some workshops to service our students and families at Ben Franklin. And then this coming year, we brought in Dr. Dale Diggs to also work with us as well as we put together a two-year pilot of looking at how we can service our students in terms of that. So, you know, the Jefferson Elementary School District mission, you know, states that all students, you know, we provide all students a high-quality education in a safe and nurturing environment where each student demonstrates a spirit of respect, responsibility, and a commitment to academic and civic excellence. And so that's our charge at Ben Franklin, and obviously the charge that the board here is also leading us in in terms of that. So we looked at some of our data, and obviously, S-BAC, there was no data this past year, and so this takes us up to 2013. You know, these slides are authored by our district offices, helping us with all these things. But looking at 2013, we were saying we had 30 African-American students, and we know that at no particular site, there is a real large number. But collectively, there are a significant number of African-American students in our district. So 30 students were scoring at 30% in 2013. And over the period of those years, you can see the ups and downs. And that's really based off of the numbers, right? In terms of, we're really talking small numbers. And as you can see, our Hispanic or Latino students, we're talking a much larger number of 195 in 2013 at 32% in comparison to some of our other areas. So this is one of the reasons why we looked at some of this data. And then looking at our math data as well, which, you know, fortunately now today has definitely have increased. I'm sure you've seen some of the data around the achievement. But here, looking at an AYP, 13.3% and 24% in our Hispanic and Latino students. So the rationale behind the NLA program, you know, is based off of the data that I just briefly showed you in terms of that. You know, it's a dialogue and action regarding academic achievement needed to be addressed. So we have to talk about what's going on and how we can help service those students, you know, and families. What can we help them, equip them with? Also, mental health services for students, you know, they definitely need support. Uh, also, mental health services for students, you know, they definitely need support to find, you know, there's different things that are happening in our students' lives. Uh, we're dealing with a lot more than when I was in middle school or, uh, and so, uh, we definitely have to have those things. And, you know, the data told us, you know, a significant portion of those are Hispanic and our African-American students in terms of that. So, I wanted to turn it over, uh, to Dr. Cooks to kinda, you know, talk a little bit as well.
Good evening, good evening. So, once, uh, once James talked to us about the, about the program, uh, what did we wanna name it? We wanted to call it the Next Level, uh, Academic Program. And that's because we want all academic, uh, achievement for all of our students. And so, with that, we had monthly meetings. And with the monthly meetings, we wanted to not just have it be a, a kind of a sit and we talk, you talk, we talk, you talk. And we wanted to be as very, as interactive as we possibly could. And so, uh, we met, um, um, as a team to try to de- develop a variety of different activities and, um, for the, for the parents and the students. And so, one of the unique things about this that I think is that students and parents are in the same room at the same time, having same conversations. Uh, many time with, many times with the PTSD or something like that, you know, they, the, the, the parents are all together and they talk adult and, and these kinds of things. And then the idea is that they're gonna go and trickle down to the students when they get home. And we kinda just said, "You know what, let's bring it all in, in one room and let's have these conversations in front of one another." Um, so, with that, the different topics that we talked about, um, my background is in language literacy and culture. And so, we talked specifically about how to build writing skills, um, what are some tips in terms of doing homework? Um, how do you build effective learning communities at home and in school? Uh, we also talked about nutrition and the impact of that on learning, right? If, uh, when you, when the, uh, facilitator poured out the amount of sugar that was in the soda, I, I think, I can't remember what, what month that was, but everyone just kinda oohed and ah like, "Wow!", right? Cause that's, that has a direct impact. Uh, and so, once we had an idea about the topics, then we decided, "Let's, let's find some engaging, uh, uh, activities and program activities." So, we, um, and I'm just gonna jump around at different points. We, uh, um, had a Black History Family Feud where we, um, where we had different questions, um, which was an interactive Black History Month game, uh, linguistic diversity and racism. We sometimes will show videos of, um, of different scenarios. And so, this one was particularly from, "What Would You Do?", if anyone's seen those from two thousand twenty. Um, and the last one we did was, uh, uh, a Spanish-speaking, uh, young man, uh, being bullied and, um, and what the other bystanders would do or, in this case, wouldn't do and why. And so, we had a conversation around that. Um, also, we talked about math and, um, and the importance of math and that we went through some, some fun games and activities. And so, with that, we then went through and said, "Hey, now, since we've had this, you know, year and a half, twelve months, uh, fifteen months, what are, what are the parents saying?" And so, Dale, I'll turn that over to you.
Well, we, um, completed, we asked the parents and the guardians to complete a survey or a pre-test, if you will, regarding what you felt was the needs for you and your child at the school. So, in September, we completed the, or we administered the survey, six themes emerged. So, one thing was, the parents really felt great about their leadership of the school. They felt comfortable with their child being there and they felt like they knew who to talk to. They knew that they, they could go to Mr. Parrish if they needed to, they knew that. Um, parents also felt like they, uh, it was important to be in the learning process. Most parents of school-aged children want to be involved every step of the way. And these particular parents said, "Yeah, we are, okay?" Um, the other four themes were, whatever issues that came up was reported and handled effectively, which is great. Cause sometimes you report things as a parent to your school administration, administration, and maybe it gets lost in a shuffle or maybe it's a late reply. But these parents felt like it was very, uh, effective. Also, parents felt like, um, the school reinforced teaching and learning for the entire family. So, they felt connected as a unit, as a family unit. Okay, alright, I'll go quickly. Um, parents also felt like regardless of race, class, or culture, that their students were treated fairly. And that's huge because, um, Dr. Cooks, hi- his specialty is, is culture. And I do institutional culture. And so, those two are not the same and they are not static. So, when we talk about school culture and we talk about individual culture, you have to learn how to merge those. And according to our parents, uh, Mr. Parrish and his staff have done that. Um, parents and guardians felt satisfied with the communication from the school and themselves, right? They have, um, different types of communication, text messaging and online and the snail mail and all those things. So, everything was good, but not everything was even one hundred percent. So, there are some elements that were up for, uh, development. Volunteerism, parent involvement, the PTSD group and communication. So, what they talked about was volunteerism. Parents did not repeat volunteerism. What does that mean? Parents would show up for the bake sale, I'm just saying that, I'm not, that's not really what happened, but the bake sale. And they wouldn't come back. So, why? Why aren't you a repeat volunteer? What is that about? Uh, the PT, PT, PTSD group. Um, parents report not being involved because two things. They didn't know when the meetings were and they didn't know that they could attend, which was interesting, okay? Um, the communication, although communication was good, what the parents said, that what worked better was one form versus the other. These parents want to be called. Excuse me, the parents said, "We want a physical human being calling us and saying, you know, the meeting has been changed" or, you know, whatever the case may be. So, overall, the parents and guardians are absolutely satisfied with Ben Franklin. The leadership, the staff, the environment, they love Ben Franklin. Um, most parents and guardians, guardians are from this area, they have lived in this city more than twenty years or maybe the balance of their existence. And they feel like it's a real community here. Um, the school as well as families would benefit from having the parents and guardians create a community school event. What does that mean? So, maybe Ben Franklin is having a, and I keep saying bake sale, cause you, I guess you see where my mind is. But maybe Ben Franklin would have a bake sale, but it would be led by the community. So, you would block off a certain street, you maybe at here at City Hall, maybe you'd block off the street here and the students from Ben Franklin, the parents and the community would participate in the community bake sale, those kinds of things. Okay, um, also, the parents want to take the lead in the community standards and encourage more volunteerism. They said, "Well, maybe if we said to our fellow parents, 'Hey, come volunteer', maybe they would, um, and not just from the staff." So, oh, I'm sorry. But, oh, okay.
So, with that, I think what ends up happening is that, uh, what, what can we say after two years, right? This survey was done in September of, uh, of this past school year. And so, now, after almost two full years, what, what can we say are some of the accomplishments of this group, um, of the program? So, parent involvement, parent involvement is up, right? They, we talked earlier about from the survey that, uh, parents wanted to see, wanted to have, wanted to see more, wanted to be, uh, the school wanted parents to be more visible, and that began to happen. There was an increased communication between parents, the school, and the teachers. And I, and I think we all know that it takes a whole village, so it's everyone communicating. If, um, uh, if the students are aware that the adults are having conversations, then that helps. And if what's being enforced, reinforced at school is being reinforced at home, that's a great thing for the students. Also, another accomplishment is the school culture and understanding. Uh, there was an increase in participation and, uh, and I can say this from being, uh, you know, someone coming in. Two years ago, uh, we, we, we talked a lot with the parents about, "Hey, this is your school, this, these are your programs, take a hold, you can do it." And there, unfortunately, uh, during Black History Month, when there is usually a multicultural night, there wasn't one. They, my, was it, was there one for that?
We had one, but the participation of that group that we were
Not from the parent. Got it, right? This year, the multicultural night was done primarily by parents, right? So, big, big difference in twelve months, right? There were increased conversations at the school about race, class, and gender. And, and now seeing some of the information that, uh, was presented earlier about the advisory, it seems that these, these two programs are, are working very well with one another. Um, and finally, the student participation, increase in student engagement in the classroom, uh, decrease in discipline incidents, um, and student accountability inside and outside of the classroom. So, although we're not sitting here saying, "Hey, the Next Level Academic Program, everyone has a four-point-oh", that, that's not what we're, that's not what we're trying to do today, that's not where we are. However, what we are saying is that the groundwork and the structure and the foundation of, of, of those, of moving in that direction is being laid and we're very excited about the future of the program.
Alright, thanks very much. Need to wrap it up.
Little chart there, so, just trying to bring it to close. Some of our next steps, uh, speaker series, tutoring services, uh, relevant field trips, you know, to, uh, bring it to close. And just a little pictorial for you to bring it out, the Common Core standard of math, number talks. Thank you very much.
Thanks for both of those presentations, uh, any board members wanna make any comments or ask any questions?
I, I do. First of all, thank you for, for that information. I, I noticed, um, you had mentioned, or it was mentioned that there were mental health services for the students. So, I wanted to ask, um, what types of services those were and if those were on-site or if they were for, were referred out to community agencies?
Uh, most of the, our mental health services are on-site, uh, with our school counselor. We also have, uh, strengthening our youth, uh, SOI counselor, what we call him, a life, uh, skills counselor, which is through a grant that we've received through the county. In addition to, we also, uh, contract out with Pyramid Alternative, uh, which comes in and helps support, uh, so, you know, h- having that interaction with those, the close interaction every second Tuesday every month. Parents get to know that you, they get to talk to myself or one of the other members on the team who may be at the meeting and able to make sure that we are able to, uh, provide, you know, student services.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Well, I wanna thank you for bringing it this evening too and explaining it all to us. Sounds really great and I'm glad I'm hearing that everybody's working together on this. And the students are very proud of you tonight. Each one of you did an excellent job in telling you, telling us what you had learned and, and what you liked about it. So, thanks for coming and continue the good work. And thank you to everyone, all the teachers who worked together with us and Ms. Martinez as well for all that you bring to it.
Yep.
I'm just wanna say thank you to everybody that participated in this program, um. You know, sometimes in life, we need to boost up to keep us, um, to keep us competitive in life or just, just need that extra help. And, um, these are definitely the, um, the safety nets that we need to make sure that our kids have the right resources to be competitive in the future. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, once again, thanks for both programs. And I wanna really commend the students that came here tonight to show their leadership skills and, uh, keep up the great work that you're doing on-site at your schools as well. Heard of a couple of your, um, officers at your school, so keep up the great work, thanks.
I had one more question, how do you get a T-shirt?
Extra, extra. Not now, not now.
You can send it to the district office, we'll get it to her.
Me too.
It's a cool shirt.
Alright, so, moving on to communications, any administrator comments?
I just wanted to congratulate the Spelling Bee winners and thank Ben Franklin for their presentations tonight. Um, you'll hear a little bit more about positive school climate in El Cap presentation I'm gonna give later. Um, and I also wanna remind folks that Literacy Day is this Saturday at Susan B. Anthony from eleven to three.
Yeah, I also wanted to congratulate the Spelling Bee winners and thank the staff and people who helped out with that. And it was great to see the Ben Franklin students and hear about the programs at the school.
Board member acknowledgements and commendations.
I know that we've mentioned twice now about the Health and Literacy Fair on Saturday, but I did wanna also, I was hoping to catch some of the students, but we are still seeking volunteers, um, any capable hands, any age, anybody willing to help out. I know that, uh, the committee is still seeking volunteers for this Saturday's event. Um, and next Friday, um, we have a fundraiser at the DeLu Boys and Girls Club. Um, we have some members of the, uh, World Wrestling, WWE, who are coming into town and who are donating their time for a fundraiser that will benefit, um, the Boys and Girls Club in Camp Unity, a summer program that we offer here throughout the peninsula. So, um, if you need more information about that, please see me later. Also, next Saturday is the Monoc Conference in San Mateo County. And the Monoc Conference is, um, in its second year and it's, um, surrounding Pacific Islander students throughout San Mateo County. So, um, it, it's been wonderful, cause a lot of people who are trying to learn about, uh, Pacific Islander culture, the impact on education and just different things and aspects around Pacific Islander students, that will be highlighted, um, with great speakers at the College of San Mateo next Saturday. Also, next Saturday is Cal Day, so I did wanna also share that with the students because it's a free event for all families. Um, it's an all-day event. And what's great about it is you're able to visit, um, the campus, engage in different, um, classes that day and also watch the football game, which my son is number twenty-five and they end up, they end up the day there, um, on the fields. But it's a great free event for those that are wishing to visit the campus and be engaged in classrooms. So, uh, congratulations again to all of our Spelling Bee winners and all of the staff and volunteers who participated in that great event.
And I'd just like to echo on that Cal Day, it's one of the most beautiful campuses in the country. Um, but, but what's also nice about it, um, for, for, for our viewing audience is the fact that you get to interact with the students that could give you a piece of how it feels to be a Cal student. Um, and that's probably the best insight on campus, thank you.
Well, just echo what everybody's saying and congratulations to everybody that, um, that we already congratulated. But, um, it's, it's nice to see all the things that we do with the students and for them because it just makes them blossom. As I sat here watching the students in the audience, they were smiling. They were happy, happy to be here and proud of what they're doing. And that, uh, is because of the teachers and the support that they get from everyone out there that makes them feel really proud of themselves. So, um, with that, um, I don't, we don't have a lot of things to report because the school was out. But, um, I did wanna let you know that I received in the mail, and probably everybody that's living in Daly City or, I'm not sure if they sent it to the schools, but there is a, the Fog Cutter, and they had an article in here. And I, you know, urge you all to look at it and maybe we can get some extra copies for you. But it does talk about the very first superintendent we had in our school district and how, um, he didn't have a car and he walked from school to school every day to say hello to the children. Uh, well, not, not asking you to do that now. That's how you can lose weight. Of course, remember, that was only when they had schools on the east side, not on the west side. But, and then I wasn't saying you had to do that, but it was just a, a really nice story talking about, um, how great he was during that time for education and that we were considered the best district in San Mateo County. And I think that we can still feel that we can be proud to be the best and continue with all the things we're doing. Um, although they sometimes don't look down this way to us, they're looking the other way. But we do a lot for our students and I just hope that we continue all of these great things we do because the more we give to the children and to the families and the more community we are. I heard the word community tonight and that's something I've been really fighting for a long time, is we can't just sit here. We have to be out in the community and have the community come in and join and celebrate with the children. That's how you get people to support. You talked about the Boys and Girls Club, there was a time when they were trying to get funds to have the program continue, to get their own place. And, uh, they came short in their fundraising. And because somebody had been invited who used to live in Daly City but got rich and moved out to Hillsboro, he came that night because it was something he engaged in as a young child and he got up and wrote a check for the rest of it. So, the more we engage the community come, the more they're gonna be able to So the more we engage the community come, the more they're going to be able to help us. And that's what we really have to do. More going out and getting people to come and see. We, we, we have great children, we have great teachers, we have great schools. We need to brag more about it. Okay? Alright. Anyway, get this article. I don't want to read the whole article, but it's awesome.
Alright, Ms. Otidy. Alright. So we have speakers cards from, the first one is Liz O'Neil, teacher.
Does it have to be first, huh? Hi, good evening. First, I want to thank you for the salary increases the past several contract years. We do appreciate that. But going on with that, the cost of living in our county over the last 10 years has gone up about 25% and our salaries have gone up about 6%. Also during those last 10 years, we took pay cuts or furloughs for four years. During this time, our surplus continued to increase, but our salaries decreased. We do have one of the higher surpluses in the county. Going along with that, we're about midpoint for beginning teacher salaries, but we're in the lower third for teachers that are considered for maximum longevity and for teachers that have more education. One of the El Cap goals that's been a big priority is to retain highly qualified teachers. And salaries would play a large part of keeping those highly qualified teachers. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Ron Johnson, teacher.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi, Ron, this is Wayne. Kind of piggybacking on that, a short history of the surplus in our district and where it came from. As you can see, the third column there is surplus or profit, which is kind of ironic since the school district is supposed to be a nonprofit institution. But as I've listed there, for several years, we received zero increase in salaries. And for four of those years, we not only received no increase, we took three furlough days, which is, equals out to one and a half percent decrease in salary. Now, I was, we were told in 2010 that if we did not take three furlough days for the next several years, that the district would go bankrupt. I was more trusting in those days. But if you'll notice, at the end of each year, the district had a surplus. The last year, the surplus was almost $3 million, which is way above what the furlough days cost. So basically, we took furlough days for no reason, a pay cut when we didn't need to. And this is, the reason I'm showing this, each year, there's been a surplus. We budget a certain amount of income, we budget expenses, and then at the end of the year, we get to see what our expenses really were and what our income really was. And so each year, we've had surpluses. That's where our surplus is, came from. We have the largest surplus in the area and it came, was built on the backs of the teachers. So what we're asking for now is just to get a little bit of that back. And we keep hearing that the surplus is one-time money, that it cannot be used for ongoing expenses. But I would posit that if every year we have a surplus, that's not one time. That's ongoing, an ongoing surplus. So I don't see why it can't be used for an ongoing expense, like giving it, a little bit of it back to the teachers who basically gave the district that surplus in the first place. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Melinda Dart, AFT.
Melinda Dart, AFT, 3267. I have a, a copy of a flyer. I have announcements tonight of upcoming events. So this event is, was mentioned last time. It's April 16th, Thursday, at Fernando Rivera Middle School, 6 to 8:30. And the title of it is "How to Cultivate Civic Mindfulness in Your Home and Beyond and Promoting Community Engagement." So I just want to make sure everyone knows about it because you don't have to go to Fernando to go to this. You can be throughout the district. And the idea would be that both students and parents could attend and, and get information about, you know, becoming more engaged in their local community and about voting in the future. I think that when we talk about the, the issues of low voting turnout, this is perhaps a way to begin early to, to build empowerment among the youth and the, the idea that voting is an important part of your future. So we want to get the word out on this and, and encourage, you know, we hope that, you know, there can be maybe even a new emphasis in general in our schools. You know, part of a positive school environment is perhaps building positive expectations for civic engagement for the future. So if we can move towards that in general, that would be great. It sounds like Ben Franklin already is and, and we have a good start. I also wanted to announce, I'm not sure that everybody knew this, that on March 28th, TRP students participated in a run that was held at Chrissy Field. It was a superhero fun run. And many school staff were involved in that. The secretary, Lenny Gregason, and several teachers, Patty Ferrant, Daniel Chan, Christian Portillo, and others took time out on a Saturday to run the 5K with the kids. And the kids were definitely faster than most of the adults, but it was a great event. And also, I and some other teachers are going to Sacramento very soon, this coming Monday and Tuesday, and then a week later, again, on a Tuesday, because it's that time of year when we go up there to lobby. And I will particularly be lobbying over the community school bills that we mentioned last time, SB 403 and 527, with the idea that if we could stream some of the money in the future from Prop 47 towards schools for positive services at the schools and make our schools hubs of the community, that, you know, that would really be a great thing. And it starts, of course, with legislation. So letting everyone know about that. Thank you.
Alright. Thanks for helping to organize the event on the 16th at Fernando. I actually met with one of the young people from this group and they really are interested in getting more involved in the schools. And these are young people from Daly City and San Francisco that, they, they just didn't really know how to get more involved. So I was glad to hear that they were involved with AFT and that will be sponsoring this event.
Yeah.
Any correspondence?
Yeah, so we, you've no, undoubtedly heard of the governor's declaration for 25% reduction in water use.
Yes.
Across the state. We have not yet received our, our individual reductions from our water agency. But we're working together with maintenance to come up with the plan for how to reduce water. We, we've already reduced water with the low hanging fruit. We have all of our fixtures are low water usage. And what's left is, is our irrigation. And so likely we will be seeing some brown lawns, but hopefully it will be a model for the rest of the community that they can have brown lawns too. And it's not that bad. We're going to get some signs that say we're doing our part to help reduce water usage. Please excuse our brown lawns. I saw one of those at a, at a university last week and I thought, hmm, that's, that's a great. And a university surrounded by very lush yards. Their front lawn was brown. So it was, it was a good, good message. We can all do more to reduce our water usage so that we have more so we can use next year. Because I don't know when this will end. Some positive news, I, I did send this out to you. Our community, our Jefferson Elementary School District community was a recipient of the Big Lift Grant, which is a partnership of San Mateo County, San Mateo County Office, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, and Social Innovation Fund. So we're getting some funds to increase our preschool slots, not just in our district, but other preschool providers in our community that provide preschool services are also getting increases so we can have more students ready for the kindergarten year.
What does that, does that mean that families will get free?
Yes, this is, this is for, to expand our program and for Head Start and for Peninsula Family Services, which all provide free to low-cost preschool. And let's see, one more thing. Oh, yes, there will be a meeting tomorrow that I will attend and I believe Ms. Liang, I know, I will also attend in Mark Church's office about the, the pilot vote-by-mail project in San Mateo County. So we'll learn more about that. I've invited someone from Mark Church's office to come and present to our full board so we can understand fully what, what the project is and what the ramifications may be for us should we choose to participate or not participate. And just not to let the other beautiful university by the bay out of tonight's meeting. There is a Cardinal Palooza this Saturday on Stanford campus from 11 to 2 where you can watch five different sports teams play and free gear and all that kind of stuff, so. Not that I expected anyone to go, but I just thought I should not have noted.
I might.
And I will be watching out for number 25.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so are those your comments as well? Alright, thanks. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like, I'd like to remove the star on one of the consent agenda items. 5-1, under classified personnel. Just take the star off, yeah.
And we're leaving 5-2 on?
Yes. It's just 5-1.
I hear a motion.
So I'd like to make a motion then to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the removal of the star under 5, Roman numeral 5-1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Resolution Number 15-4-8, Classified Administrative Professionals Day.
So you see in your, in your package, we do have a resolution to celebrate Classified Administrative Professionals Day. We do this every year. This year, the date is for April 22nd. And so we asked the board to pass a resolution that we can distribute to all schools so they can honor and acknowledge that day as well.
Who's included as classified administrator?
Classified administrative professionals include all school, classified school office staff, district office, office staff, department office staff, so.
Alright.
Not, not the administrators, just their support, support staff, primarily in the school office, school department and district office.
So when you say department, what's department?
Special Education Department, Maintenance Department.
Okay, so it's, it's basically all of the classified support staff?
Office staff, yes.
Oh, but not?
We, we will, no, we will have Classified Employees Week or Day. I forget what it is, later in May.
Just make sure we're not excluding anybody.
Yeah, we're getting everybody in. Eventually, I think there's also, we always forget about it, but there is an Administrator Week too, so. We're putting, putting that on the calendar.
Yeah, don't forget.
I want my doughnut.
Motion to approve Classified Administrative Professionals Day.
I'll second that.
And we need a roll call, I believe?
Mr. Otidy?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mrs. Liang Anawai?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
And Resolution Number 15-4-08A, Day of the Teacher.
Similarly, Day of the Teacher is celebrated across the state and maybe even the nation on May 5th. Should be for much fun and fiesta on that day. So we asked the board to approve a resolution in support of that day.
So I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 150408A, Day of the Teacher.
I second it.
Roll call.
Oops, I should have said for May 5th.
Mr. Otidy?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Mrs. Liang Anawai?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Curriculum and Instruction, Pupil Personnel Services, Item Number 1, Acceptance of Donations.
Once again, in this time of fiscal need, I'd like to thank the people who donate to our schools because every penny counts. Lifetouch National Studios to George Washington, Scholarship America, Box Top Education, Wells Fargo Foundation to John F. Kennedy, Mr. and Mrs. Terry Ho, Mr. and Mrs. Warren Manzana, Mr. and Mrs. Ernest Wu, Ms. Nicole Colette, Mr. and Mrs. Yu, Mr. and Mrs. David Gregory, Mr. and Mrs. Mike Nightingale, Mr. and Mrs. Ming Yu Ju, Mr. and Mrs. Eric Muckel at MH Tobias. Once again, thank you for your donations and a motion to approve as stated.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Item Number 3, Common Core State Standards, English Language Arts Professional Development Updates.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jessica Pace and I am the Program Director for English Language Arts. With me tonight, two of our four ELA coaches are here. We have Melinda Dart and we also have Lisa Rizzo. So we're so happy that they can join us tonight to support our department. Today, I'm going to be reporting out about our professional development that we've been able to do with our teachers and administrators this year. You can see from my graphic, we've been putting a lot of pieces together this year. We've been working for several years on a lot of these initiatives sort of individually. And this year, we really started to work with our teachers and administrators about putting these ideas together, really focusing in this year on ELA Common Core standards and what those instructional shifts look like in terms of practices within our classrooms. Some of our learning outcomes for this year's two rounds of professional development, we really started to go deeper within our ELA as well as our ELD standards. We're very proud that we were able to partner with the ELD Department. Benjamin Moser is here tonight and really start to do some integration of ELA and ELD with our teachers. We focused in on text-dependent questions, really taking a look at what academic vocabulary looks like in our classrooms and thinking about what we do with all that text evidence that we're having students gather. So last year when I were here, was here, we talked a lot about how we were getting the students discussions going in classrooms. And now we've taken that and now those discussions around text evidence are actually ending up in a Friday writing prompt. And we're really excited about those pieces of work that students are able to produce. Teachers are continuing to work on our initiative of Structured Student Talk. We have preschool teachers here with us tonight and they're working on the exact same initiative as our eighth grade teachers. And we're really proud to be able to see the progression from grade to grade. And this year, we introduced for our teachers some support material that I'll talk a little bit about, bridge lessons. And thinking about how we can take our existing materials and adapt them in a way that is addressing our Common Core standards. Also, we're really proud at our PDs, we were able to get grade-alike teachers together in the same room at the same time, which is so rare. Oftentimes, our teachers are working collaboratively with their grade-level teams, but to be able to get all the fifth grade teachers in the room at the same time together to be able to work and collaborate has been a really powerful piece of the professional development. So thinking about some of the instructional changes that are coming along in ELA, there are six real shifts in instruction that we've begun to work on. Um, there are six um real shifts in instruction that we've begun to work on. Um, but really this last year, we focused in on three of those shifts. Thinking about um text-based questions and answers and what that looks like in our language arts classes. How to begin to write um from sources of information, how do we take that text evidence and put it into a written piece? And also really focusing in on our academic vocabulary. Not having an academic vocabulary focus just during ELD time, but how does that transition over to science time, to social studies time, to language arts time, so all students have that language of power. So our big ticket item this year has been our bridge lessons for ELA. And supporting our teachers in grades second through eighth with a resource to be able to use so that we can continue to use our Pearson textbooks that were written to the old California standards. And how do we sort of repurpose those textbooks in a way that teachers are able to work with students on the new Common Core standards? Um, so about two years ago, um, the ELA Department and I started working with Student Achievement Partners. It's a national group and um we were able to participate in some deep Common Core training to get ourselves feeling more proficient around Common Core. So we could then begin to share some of that knowledge with our teachers here in the district. At those trainings, we learned how to write these bridge lessons, so how to take the language arts um shifts and how to write lessons that are more reflective of what um is expected in the new Common Core standards. Last June, we were really excited to bring in teams of Jefferson teachers to also learn how to write these lessons. Many of them have authored multiple lessons and to date, the ELA coaches need to really be commended for this. We have um published over a hundred lessons. Um, and not only are teachers in our district using these lessons, they're used nationally. And so we're very proud of the work that we're doing um around Common Core. And um we've gotten great feedback from our teachers in the district about this being a really great resource for them. So we've put these lessons into binders for teachers to use at the school sites, as well as we have them posted on our ELA um webpage. And during our professional development time, we've been able to really showcase teachers in our district. We've got amazing people who are working uh with our students every day and our teachers are in videos that are actually showing other teachers how to try these instructional practices. It's really been exciting and um we've really been able to work through and come up with some great ways of how to implement these bridge lessons um within the classroom. And um, thinking about what kind of support we are providing in addition to the professional development um and the binders and our videos that we have. Um, we've got amazing coaching going on in our schools to be able to support teachers in trying and taking new risks around implementing these initiatives in their classroom. Um, I've been able to go out to all sites at least twice and walk with principals, visit all of our classrooms. And I've just, I've seen amazing things going on in our classrooms. It's so exciting to see um the great work that our teachers are doing around these initiatives. Um, and then in addition to the bridge lessons being on our webpage, um, teachers from all over our district are creating really great documents and they're sending them to us and now we have them housed as a bank of resources for teachers to be able to use. So we've written an academic vocabulary routine in a graphic organizer and that's on the webpage. Um, we have teachers creating different bookmarks with text-dependent questions and frames and all of the resources that they're using in their classroom, we're locating on the webpage so that we can really begin to share those resources with one another. And it's just been great to be able to have uh an environment where we're really all learning with each other and that's been great. Um, so what are our next steps? Um, well, we're really excited about some of our next steps in terms of professional development coming up. Um, I'm proud to report that the group that we've been working with, Student Achievement Partners, um, has asked that I come and present in May at their National Core Advocates um Conference. And they wanna hear Jefferson's story. They feel like we've really been on a great journey. We have a great initiative where our preschool teachers and eighth grade teachers are all working side by side. And they feel that we have a story that other districts can benefit from. So I'm excited to be the messenger of that story and to be able to share the great work that's happening with our teachers and administrators. We're also going to be uh leading professional development in August and also next year, so we're just gonna keep going. It's not like a one-shot deal. We just keep building and working with our teachers. And um at our last professional development with our kindergarten and first grade teachers, they said, "We want bridge lessons too. How do we get involved in this project?" And so we've just about wrapped up second through eighth grade bridge lessons. And this June, we plan to meet with K and one teachers and start writing lessons with them um as well. And then in closing, we plan to just keep building our department's capacity to be able to help lead some of these initiatives. So we have plans to go to um Teachers College in August to learn more about writing. And we hope to bring forth a K-eight consistent writing program in the next couple of years. Thank you. Any questions?
I had a quick question about the bridge lesson.
Yes.
So just to get clear about it, are you're taking the original content from the Pearson?
We're taking the story selection, whether it is a literature piece or an informational text piece. We're taking that story selection, but instead of all the teacher questions and all the information that is in the teacher's edition that was written to the old standards, we're, we have a new template.
Alright, that's.
So we create new questions, new writing tasks, and we sort of repurpose it. So the students are still using the same textbook.
Right.
But we're sort of moving aside some of that old stuff and really bringing in um some of the new Common Core so that we know uh if teachers are using these bridge lessons with students, because they've been through a review process, we know that they are teaching Common Core by following those lessons.
Right.
And a lot of the um uh bank of text-dependent questions and the resources that teachers need to be able to provide quality instruction that's Common Core in the classroom, the work's been done for them. And then the teachers are just making instructional decisions about which parts they're going to use and, and sort of how they're gonna purpose it, so.
Sounds great.
And that's just sort of a temporary solution, to be quite honest with you, until new materials
That was my question, like.
Come down the pike.
Pearson is not, has not cut up to you yet.
No, right, right. We're, we're, we're trying to stay ahead and keep our kids current, so they are, you know, ready for all of the college and career demands that they have. And so in the interim, this is sort of our solution until um, you know, we get to a place where there might be new materials for us to look at uh adopting that are more in line with the new standards.
Right, alright, sounds good. Any questions?
No questions. I just had to make a, make a comment. When I, a month ago, when um I was interested in taking on this seat, one of the questions I was asked is what I thought was a highlight for me, uh, from my perspective in the district. And my answer was, one of the highlights was seeing how um the teachers were very creative and being out-of-box thinkers in transitioning into Common Core and how they're, they're making that relatable across the board. And to, tonight is a testament of that reply that I gave a month ago. And I just wanna commend the teachers that are being that, you, you, you guys are all involved in that out-of-box thinking and being creative and, and now nationally being recognized for the work that you're doing. I, I think it's awesome. I just wanna commend you all. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't say it any better than you did. I'll say ditto to that and thank you. You guys have been really working hard and I've been able to see some of it when I go around. And you guys always try to engage us, so we're, we're, we're with you. And, but thank you because it's gonna make a big difference on the students' progress.
Absolutely.
It really is. And I know it's a lot of extra work that you probably, none of you imagined or, or had to do before, but it's all gonna come to a great end. I really, I think it's gonna be great. You'll be very proud of what you're doing.
The key takeaway I got from your presentation was the bridge and, and connecting these Pearson readings to basically in-house questions um and, and templates for Common Core. And the reason I wanna say that, that's, that's very impressive because um I've used Pearson books for professional development and those questions are full of mistakes.
Uh-huh.
I mean, they are, they are. I mean, I, I, I'll say it, sometimes I question if it's an idiot that's writing these questions. So for you guys to take it to the next level, you guys probably have a better template than Pearson will ever come out with. And I'm glad you're going to this invitation for Core Advocacy Conference and basically spreading the knowledge on, on, on what you've guys done. And you have developed a template that's gonna make our district awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Local Control Accountability Plan Updates.
Alright, so I'm back again with some updates on the Local Control Accountability Plan. Um, so we've had some, a lot of meetings and um we have some high priority actions that we're gonna share with you tonight. And um we have some direction that we need from you as well, some authorization. So um you've seen this chart before. This is all of the stakeholder meeting dates that are scheduled or have happened. The um ones in purple have occurred. So you can see we've held quite a few. Um, we just need to share uh the draft that has been um uh in progress right now with our District English Language Advisory Committee, which is actually tomorrow, and then our Parent Involvement Advisory Committee. And then we're gonna bring the draft to the public, to you, um, at a May board meeting. Um, this draft is, was crafted um over last week. Um, and it was based on all of the school sites, all of the meetings that have happened, AFT, CSEA, um, PIAC, all of those meetings. Everyone has provided the input, um, and this is where the draft um has been created. Um, so at a previous meeting, we talked about the goals. There used to be six goals, now there are five goals. We consolidated some goals. And so just to remind you that these are the goals for fifteen sixteen. Four of these goals are actually in the LCAP, um, Student Learning, Professional Learning for Staff, Positive School Climate and Community Engagement. The fifth goal, fiscal prudence is um really the foundation of how we build this um LCAP because we have to be fiscally responsible and, and to build our budget based on it. So where are we in this LCAP process? Um, we've shared the data for all of the goals and metrics, cause we have to have a way to measure our goals. And so we've shared all that in our March and February meetings. Um, we've updated our annual progress and um shared all this with our stakeholders and now we're in the process. Uh, we have actually, based on the input, identified the resources and uh the actions that we um hope to accomplish in fifteen sixteen and beyond. So um in twenty fifteen sixteen, our base grant is going to be forty-one point two million. Remember, there are two pockets of money, um, with the local control funding formula, the base grant and the supplemental and concentration. The base grant is the larger sum and that's really what um runs our district. It's all the personnel, so it's the operating costs. Um, forty-one point two million, just for your knowledge, is two point nine million more than this current school year. And as I just said, it covers basic educational operational services. Our district, the main um uh funding or the main expenditure is people. Um, so that's where the bulk of our money goes. Um, and it also covered the increased costs of STIRS and PERS. Uh, we have a technology equipment reserve because we are um really trying to get into the twenty-first century with our technology. We wanna make sure that we have um a replacement program for that. And then also, school sites received additional discretionary funds um in relation to the growth of LCFF. So additional twenty fifteen sixteen expenditures, step and column increases, um, which is about six hundred thousand dollars, um, which will be an increase in step and column. And then additional STIRS and PERS contributions, so STIRS is about five hundred thousand and PERS is sixty-seven thousand. Uh, more that we'd have to pay from twenty fourteen fifteen. And Ms. Kessler will share more about the budget um at a future meeting. So the supplemental and concentration grant, you can see that it is seven point seven million, which I believe is about one point three million more than twenty fourteen fifteen. Um, and so these are all the current district expenditures. It's a lot of our um, to support our students, um, English learners, our low-income students, foster youth are at-risk students. Um, and so the funds in the supplemental concentration grant must go to increase um and improve those services to those students. And so you can see the list is, you know, librarians, technology curriculum director, nurses, coaches, um, math and English language arts department. A lot of it went to professional development. Um, and then we also, if you recall, we gave each school site um per pupil amounts to help support um programs. So that went to some, some school sites did uh additional um support teachers, um, to support those particular students. Um, and so in the process of the LCAP, we've asked everyone, based on the data, based on our actions, what do we need to add? What do we need to change? And so this is just a list of the high priority. I have a forty-page document that you'll get to see, so this is, you're not seeing at all. Um, but these are the highest priority um that uh the stakeholders, all stakeholders, um, put down as, as kind of their, their number ones. Um, and so you can see a lot of these have to do with the positive behavior intervention support. That's the positive school climate. So building those programs and those strategies, additional counseling, nursing support, uh, more tech integration support, that was really high. Um, expanding our English learner, English language development support, PE um for the elementary level, writing program, as Ms. Pace mentioned as well, that was a high priority. Um, a lot of the families said they want more social media and email communication to really um bring fa- uh families in. And we're actually already kind of in the process of working on that. Um, and then expanding our partnership with AFT and PTA with their parent engagement. So they've done a fabulous job this year of hosting and coordinating those. And so Ms. Martinez is actually working on coordinating with, for next year, so that we can all be a partnership with that. Um, and then summer learning and arts programs, as well as some of our furniture, just, we need to have a replacement program. We can't just um let it go. So those are the um high priority, but some of these are positions. And if we wait until the LCAP is approved in um June, we're gonna miss some of the highest qualified candidates. So what we're asking today is to get authorization from you to start looking, seeking for some of these positions. Um, because if we wait too long, we're gonna miss some people, you know, this is the time people start looking for positions. And so these are the positions from that other list that are people, the personnel. Um, and so what we're proposing is elementary school counselors, so five full-time equivalent elementary counselors. So that would mean each of the ten elementary schools, and I'll explain why I just said ten. The ten elementary schools would each get a half-time counselor. They would share a counselor. For Franklin D. Roosevelt is turning into a K-eight school, so we are considering them more middle school elementary. And so if you look at the next one down, the middle school psychologist, middle schools already have a counselor. They need support with mental health. And so having a middle school psychologist that focuses on mental health um would be what we're proposing. And then FDR would have a psychologist instead of a counselor. And so they would have a full-time psychologist at their site because they're expanding to a um K-eight program. Um, it has an asterisk because um, mental health, if a student has an IEP, is in special education, the uh medical and mental health, we get reimbursed for that. So that would probably cover half that cost. So in um the uh chart there, you'll see that that's half of the cost. So that's only really two full-time equivalent mental health um psychologists. We also are proposing to increase the district nurse by one and having a clerk to support the nurses, an, an additional clerk. Um, and then also technology integration resource teachers. Uh, we had one that was, um, we never, we're able to fill the position. And so now we're saying we need three, one for each region. Um, and so this is just adding two more to that one that was already in the books. Um, and so uh, that is um what we're asking for in addition. And then we do not have an English language development coach, and so that is a need. Um, as Mr. Moser came up here and shared with you, you know, we're a bit stagnant right now, so we need some more support. And so having an additional coach and then having um some PE teacher leads for the elementary sites to help um our elementary schools with um physical education. And so having it regional leads that they would help and support um each elementary school in the region. And so that costs approximately one point two million or one million two hundred forty thousand.
You say three regional elementary PE teachers?
Teacher leads.
So if, so if we get three, those three will be going to all the elementary schools?
They're not actually teaching the PE, they're going and supporting. Yeah, but they would be in charge of, you know how each middle school has feeder schools?
Yes.
So that's the region.
Okay.
They would be um working with those mills, those elementary sites.
Okay, great, thanks.
So what we need from you um is authorization for these personnel expenditures, cause we don't wanna miss the boat on some of these candidates. Um, and then these, as I said, these all came from the stakeholder. We'll bring you the um draft in May at a May meeting. And then there will be final. We'll bring you the draft in May, at a May meeting, and then there will be final budgets and allocations coming in June.
So this will be ongoing?
Yes.
And probably very well, very much needed, I'm sure. So that, when you say one additional nurse, do we still only have one nurse, or do we have?
We have 1.8, I believe.
Well, how do you make it 1.8?
Someone does, only works four days a week.
Okay.
By choice.
By choice, their choice.
All right, so that means we'll have three?
Yes.
It's getting up there, but, okay.
So just, just to give or relay any concerns on this 1.2 million dollars. If you remember from Ms. Kessler's budget presentations, we had an approximately like 2.5 million of unallocated funds for next year. 1 million of that would be, is what the governor gave us three times, but it's really one, $1 amount. It was called Common Core Implementation/Mandated Cost Reimbursement/Something Else. But, so that's 1 million of that, which is a one-time revenue stream. And then 1.5 million that is ongoing. And so we're recommending that we go ahead and start searching for these, these folks now with your authorization, believing that certainly for next year, we have sufficient funds to cover them. And then knowing that the supplemental and concentration funds, which is where most of our discretionary, discretionary money comes, will be able to fill in for the year after. So much like we did with our school sites last year, when we appropriated the $513 per student, we funded it in, in hope, or in the knowledge that it would be funded in out years. And as we saw in the budget presentation, we caught up. So we're no longer paying for, for that. Programs like these and the ones at the school sites do take time to develop. And we want to at least lay out where we want to go and see how much of it we can get done. So that's, that's where some of the funding for this can come from.
I have a technical question about community input. How exactly is the input gathered? Is it, do you give the community a survey, or?
No, it was during those meetings that were held at the school sites, as well as through parent involvement.
So they just verbally said something and people?
No, we had a whole, I shared at the last meeting that there were these charts that they had up. There were five, it was the five previous schools, because you had to base it on this year's goals of 2014-15. So we had all of the data, and then we asked the question, what does the data tell us? And so they wrote on these charts. And then we said, what additional actions and services do you recommend? And so then that was written, and they all sent those to me. And I collect, I have a whole stack of these posters, one for each goal. So that was from every school site and every meeting that has occurred, AFT, CSCEA, PIAK.
So is it possible, because we have this meeting at Fernando Rivera, is it possible to get some of that information there, or is it too late?
Well, the draft is already written at this point. And it's pretty much consensus right now, all of these, we saw it across the board district-wide, a lot of these activities. So, and you know, we, it's a three-year plan, and so every year we have to come back and, you know, do the outgoing years as well. So it's not like we write it one year and then come back to it in a couple of years. We do it every year. So even if, you know, they did not feel they had input this year, because they didn't make the meeting, they can come in next year.
Next year, all right, good answer.
We had to, we have to prioritize anyway, and this is what the majority of folks are saying, so.
And every, the neat thing about this was at schools, when they did this with their communities, we had district data gathering, as well as school site data gathering. And so now they have an idea of the priorities that are important for their own school sites, that they can fund from some of their supplementary and concentration dollars. And yeah, as Ms. McCulick said, as I, as I've looked at all of the different charts, every, everyone seems to have some of the same activities that are, that are being recommended. So we feel confident that these are the top choices, certainly for the program and then the staff that is needed to support that program. We also got a lot of great ideas from this that may not make it into this year's LCAP, but will make it into next year's iteration of when we propose. Here's some ideas that we've heard in the past that were high priority.
All right, well, I think definitely these are also priorities that I've heard, you know, my fellow board members bring up, that we wanted to see these areas strengthened. So that's my input off the bat. Any deliberation on this?
Oh, no, I think it's pretty clear.
All right.
And again, these are just the positions associated with that. There's a lot more programs and other activities that you'll see at the full LCAP presentation. But this being already April, we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to see if there are folks interested in working for our district in these capacities, to see what we can build for next year.
Yeah, I definitely think is.
I do have a question. So just, just to get a handle on this money of the 1.2 million dollars. If I'm correct, we have our base grant, and then we have our supplemental concentration grant. With this local control funding, we had 41.2 million that are going to operations and 7.7 going to supplemental. And of that 7.7, which we can't spend in the, the operation side, we have 1.2 million dollars that we don't know where to spend, and that's basically what we're doing here. And second question is, is it one of those lose it, or use it or lose it, uh, money?
Yeah, well, we certainly want to use it. I, I think we can save it, but, but there's no purpose in saving it, because we're going to get more next year. And there's also, what I was speaking about was the addition, that 1 million of flexible one-time dollars that I think we can use to help fund this for this next year. And it comes back to us in the following year, backfills into the budget. Fairly confident, I'm speaking to Ms. Kessler, that that, that we'd be able to do. We don't, we may need to dip into reserve, at least on the, just for your understanding, at least in the, in the adopted budget. It may look like we are utilizing some of the reserve, and it may turn out that in fact, we're getting better and better at budgeting, that we end up using it at the end. But we typically use about 90% of our budgeted costs, because nobody likes to spend to the last penny. People like to, at the school site everywhere, it was like, well, let's save a little bit. So, so we, typically it's about nine, 10%, a little bit less than 10% depending on the school site that's not used.
So when I look at this list, it's the stuff that really reaches out to the children, to the students, that's needed. So I'm, I'm glad it's here, and I'm glad we're going to be doing something more for our students and the areas where they need the help.
Yes.
So with that, if we don't want to be saying too much about this, I'd like to make a motion on it. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, no, you're done, right?
I'm done.
I thought somebody got up like Melinda.
I was ready.
She's quitting while she's ahead.
She's quitting while she's ahead.
I just had a question.
Oh, yeah.
What is a timeline for this?
For this?
For, yeah.
So the LCAP needs to be adopted by June 30th, and it will include all of these expenses, as well as other expenses that are incorporated into that plan. So if we approve this today, then beginning this week, we can begin to announce these openings, knowing that the board is support, is in support of these positions. We, we could do it, because we won't really spend it until after July 1st, but it's a little bit tricky if, if the board's not supportive of these. I don't, I don't believe that that would happen, but it's always nice to get board approval before we engage in something as this large.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So.
Do we have to motion to approve?
That's what I was trying to do over here, is to make sure nobody wanted to speak on it. Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve the supplemental and concentration grant, additional LCAP personnel expenditures beginning in 2015-16, as listed in the agenda, for two, for 1,240,000.
Second? All right, go ahead.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, yes.
Unanimous decision.
Okay.
And thank you so much, and we will be reporting probably at the beginning of the year exactly how many of these we were successful in filling. We hope that we can fill them all. But as we learned this last year, we, we were not able to fill all of the desired positions. And so we'll hope to fill those, plus all the new ones.
All right, everybody spread the word. Business and Financial Procedures, Thomas R. Polisita Middle School Construction Update. And do we have the representative from Block Construction?
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Cassie Camilleri, and I'm a senior project engineer with Block Construction. And this is my fellow colleague.
I'm Dave Bremer, I'm the project engineer. Been here since the beginning.
Oh, yeah.
We're very excited to present to you tonight on the construction progress for the Phase One project at TR Polisita Middle School. So just to recap, what we've been working on for the last six months or so. Phase One of the three-phase project at TR Polisita. We are currently building two classroom buildings with a total of 26,000 square feet of, of classroom space. There's 19 classrooms in total, laboratory classroom included, as well as site improvements. And we have an expected completion date of July of this year. Sorry. So as far as important project milestones, so just to bring you back a little bit, we did get started at kind of end of October timeframe. And if you remember, November and December were very wet months for Daly City. So one of the first things we had to take care of in order to start vertical construction was to cut into the hillsides at the backside of the campus and build our retaining walls, so that we could start working on the foundations and build upward for the buildings. So the retaining walls were in the process of being built and dug during those rains. So we did initially have some issues with rain delays and having to muck out the footings that we had dug for the retaining walls. So we did have some delays early on. So one of our big pushes in about January, we sat down with our team to decide, what can we do to progress the schedule faster? So sat down with our internal team, Block is self-performing the framing work on-site. So we decided what we can do on our end is prefabricate all of the wood-framed walls that we are working on. So immediately got that into action, started prefabricating walls in our warehouse in San Jose, and then also started prefabricating what we could on-site. So something that we would like to point out that was pretty neat is that we actually finished one of the buildings, building 500 foundations in this slab that we were building on, and within nine working days, we already had all of the walls up. So that was pretty spectacular to see, you know, going from nothing to something in nine days. We actually have a really neat time lapse video of it. If you would like to see, we were going to put it in here, but ended up pulling it. But we, if you want to put it on the website to share, or just share with your friends and brag about the work that's going on, we'd be happy to share that with you. So that was building 500, building 400, finished the foundation and slabs February 27th. And building, on the March 20th, we already had all of the walls up. So that's a significantly larger building than building 500, so it did take a little bit more time. But we built, we saved a lot of time by doing this prefabrication work, and we're now ahead of schedule, which is obviously where we want to be. So we plan to have, we're, we have finished all of the framing for building 500 and plan to have building 400 complete just later this month. So we've gained a lot of time by doing that prefabrication process. I'll turn it over to Dave, he'll kind of talk about where we're moving forward from here.
So as Cassie mentioned, she talked about all of the milestones that we've already met. These are, this is a list of some of the things that we're working on right now. As she said, building 500 is just about complete as far as framing is concerned. We're assuming, and then building 400 is, is coming right behind it. Next step is the, the dry-in of both building 400 and 500. Dry-in means basically when we can start doing all the work inside, the finishes, the carpentry, or the casework, the paint, the drywall, all that stuff. Once the roof's on and the stock goes on the side, so that none of the inside gets wet. Those are the next big milestones, because then the interior and the exterior start to kind of break away, and we can get a lot more done in the small spaces. As you can see, after that, building at 400 and 500 should be complete around the mid-July-ish. And then the last sort of touch-up, commissioning, all of the close-out things that we're going to be helping you with will be complete during those last few weeks, ready to start moving. So now we have a slideshow of some of the pictures as things have gone on. Cassie mentioned that the retaining walls were a pretty big milestone that we worked on. I don't know if you remember what it used to look like, but there was a pretty significant hillside that came down the back. As you can see in that left photo, there's a pretty big cut that we've made, basically moving all of the earth out, so that we can put the retaining wall in and then put all of the earth back. Once that is finished, you can see in the middle photo that we have started to build up the actually retaining wall. And on the right photo, there's another retaining wall on the west side between TR Polisita Middle School and Bridgemont. Once those were complete, we were able to put all the soil back in the location, so that we could actually get to the fun part and start working on the actual buildings. So the next milestone is the footings and the slab. As you can see in that top photo, it's, we're working on the building 400, which is about three size, times the size of building 500. The bottom photos and the right photo are showing the work that went on before that and all the prep work, trying to get ready, so that we can actually pour the concrete for building 500. Building 400 was another one of those race against time scenarios. As you can see in the top, we have a little bit of clouds and we're racing against some rain. We ended up pouring about 375 yards, which is comparable to about 40 trucks in one day. One of those things that we take a lot of care in is to make sure that while we're having all those trucks come in and out, that not only the students and the staff are safe, but all of the public around it. So we have the site fenced off and make sure that while all of that is going on, everyone is safe to walk home. So next is the framing. As Cassie mentioned, this is something that we actually worked pretty hard on to begin with, to get, make sure to catch up on all that time that we had lost from the rains. You can see on the top, one of the top middle photos, we have, are actually craning in a prefabricated wall. The top photo basically shows the difference with the bottom photos within, I think it took us six hours to put up all the walls in building 500. So it looked like the top-left one, and by the end of the day, you had a building. So doing the same thing with building 400, and we're just finishing the last bit up right now. So this is, these were pictures that actually were took, taken on Monday. We're doing the mechanical and electrical and plumbing rough-in, which is all of the stuff in the wall, so that when we have the drywall up, it looks nice and you don't see any of the things that are going on inside, as well as working on, on the roofing. So going back to the whole dry-in, we're trying to build the building envelope safe, so that we can start to install everything inside. So this is a photo that was taken on Monday, where we are as of this week. Building 500 is on the left, it's, it's getting close to being ready to start the interior work. And building 400 is on the right, we should be finished with the framing within the next few weeks. So I think we'll leave it at that and see if you have any questions.
Questions, Mr. Zwala?
No, I had an opportunity to go and visit the site. The principal took me around, I mean, I couldn't go down where you guys were, of course.
Well, if any of you would ever like to come out, please just let us know, we'd be glad to give a tour.
But it was amazing just seeing how much was getting done, so, thank you.
It did start to move quickly, so.
Sure, tidy. Any questions? All right, thanks for that update.
Thank you.
Approval of lease, leaseback agreement, site lease and sublease for TR Polisita Middle School Project Phase 2A. The administration recommends approval of the lease, leaseback agreement, site lease and sublease between Jefferson Elementary School District and Block Construction for the construction Phase 2A for demolition and site utilities.
So we already approved one, the first one.
Yes, so we have, we, we went through this process prior to beginning Phase One. Now we're planning for and getting ready for Phase 2A. And so we do have someone from District's legal counsel here to explain, again, some of the, the different structures that we have to. of the different structures that we have to set up in order to complete this. So if you would come forth, that'd be great. And I forget your name. Is it Arnie?
Arnie Sandberg.
Yeah, Arnie Sandberg. I want to say Arnie Duncan, but he's the secretary of education.
Not quite. He's a few levels above.
Arnie Sandberg, yes.
Well, we were here six months ago, I think, with the approval of Phase One, and this is now the beginning of Phase Two. It's Phase 2A because it's the first portion of Phase Two, it's the site work and demolition work. And again, it's lease, lease-back is the delivery method that is being used instead of competitive bidding, it's with Block Construction. The lease-leaseback structure is set up with three agreements, not just one, and so that's why you'll see three agreements in the package. There's the main lease agreement where the basic terms are outlined and the general conditions, which are quite thick, are included as an exhibit. Then there's a site lease where the district leases the site to Block Construction, and then there's a sublease where it is leased back to the district. And then the payments for the construction are all incorporated in the provisions of those documents. And actually, a year ago, I think it was in the fall, there was a case, a court decision approving the use of lease-leaseback. Some people maybe had some doubts as to its use, but the courts of, the appellate courts came down and said that it definitely is appropriate in these situations. So from a legal point of view, you're all set to go.
I think I had a lot of questions last time you came.
And just to explain a little bit, so we decided to break Phase Two into at least two portions, partly because the plans for the second part, Phase 2B, are still at the State Department of State Architects. So we didn't want to wait to receive approval for that and then get bids on that before we can start the demolition. This way, we can start demolition as soon as those buildings are vacated, so demolition can begin. I don't know, Mr. Young, do you know what our plan for demolition start is?
Our plan for demolition starts on Monday after school closes.
Okay. So that's very quick. So we want to be able to allow Block to get in there and start doing what they need to do so that by the time the plans are approved and we can begin Phase 2B, all of that work's already been done, and then they can start Phase 2B.
So is the whole purpose of the lease-leaseback is the time factor?
It has numerous benefits, and Block can add some comments to mine for this particular situation, but lease-leaseback allows you to develop a closer relationship with your contractor, which has, leads to various advantages. Block has been working on Phase One, and they're planning to work all the way through Phase Three, and that leads to, and Block has a lot of experience on these types of projects, and the district selected them through a process a year or two ago.
Right.
So again, I'm Paul Keel with Block, and like Arnie's saying, one of the things about the lease-leaseback is you're teaming up with your contractor. And really, the rest, the majority of the work that is being performed is by subcontractors, and that work is competitively bet out.
Right.
So what you're doing is you're just using our qualifications. You chose us on our qualifications based on what we've done in the past, and this way we can guarantee a certain amount of dollars that you're not going to go over, and that's our guaranteed maximum price, which is what the contract is based on.
All right, got you. Thanks.
And together with Block, the district and Block are able to identify qualified subcontractors. We did turn out, at least in Phase One, that all of the subcontractor selected were the lowest bidder for the job, and, but they were among qualified candidates. Now, if we had done it a traditional way, it's anybody who has a license, you know, can bid, and a project this big, and with the timelines that we have, we only wanted the most qualified bidders to, just to bid on the job.
Great. Do we need anything else to make a vote?
I had a lot of questions last time. I told you guys, and that's last time.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the lease, lease-back agreement, site lease and sublease for TR Polisita Middle School Project Phase 2A.
I'll second it.
I don't know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Five, temporarily suspend efforts to sell or lease surplus real property at Daniel Webster Elementary, and the administration is recommended that we direct staff to suspend efforts to sell or lease the property which was declared surplus by Board Resolution 080319. During this suspension, staff is directed to undertake additional study regarding potential future use of the property for district purposes. Except for this suspension of efforts, this motion does not modify or invalidate any part of Board Resolution 080319.
Motion to temporarily suspend efforts to sell or lease surplus real property at Daniel Webster Elementary.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Certificated personnel, and we have a correction for number one?
Yes, we do. I need to apologize to Ms. Kathy Kelly-Brightler for the wrong title being put in there because she is a speech pathologist in the district. So we do recommend, unfortunately, she wants to retire, so I have somebody who's joining me in that for next year. So Kathy Kelly-Brightler will be, is requested to retire at the end of the school year. She is currently the speech pathologist at Fernando Rivera and TR Polisita Middle Schools, and she's also been at other schools previous to that. She's worked with us since September 1976. So of course, we would like to see an appropriate resolution prepared, commending her for her service in the district.
All right.
So I would, anybody want to say something?
No.
I just want to say that she'll be missed a lot, she's a tremendous asset to our district, but she, it's well-deserving that she gets her retirement, spend time with her husband, and to do the things that she hasn't been able to do because she's been working with us. I'm glad that we, that we made this correction on this, because I know she's been really proud of her title, but I wanted to make sure that the resolution that we're going to approve, I don't know if it's already ready or not, but that we be sure that it would reflect the title.
Yes, it will.
Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion that we accept the retirement for Kathy Kelly-Brightler, speech pathologist, and it would be effective June 24, 2015, and appropriate resolution be prepared, commending her for her many years of service with the district.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yours looks different than mine. Oh, could you have the addition to that? Okay.
Classified personnel, item one resignation. The administration recommends acceptance of the resignation request for the purpose of retirement from Valerie J. West, Office Assistant One at Susan B. Anthony, effective 6/5/15, and the preparation of a letter of commendation for her years of service in the district. Mrs. West has been employed by the district since 10/9/2000.
Okay.
So October.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure before we made the motion, if we could change that letter of commendation to a resolution, which we usually do for our employees for retirement?
Can I explain the difference?
Because it, we do resolutions for people who are retiring in terms of pers and stirs, and we do letters of commendation for people who have just had that many years of service.
Got you.
Excuse me? I've never heard it explained that way because since I've been on the board, we have given If a person has spent 15 years in our district, it's a resolution not granting her a retirement, it's granting, it's praising her for her work in the district. I really recommend that we treat all our employees who, especially a 15-year person, to receive a resolution, as we have in the past.
So it has been the district practice to approach it in this way?
Maybe recently, but not for all the years that I've been here. I just think that it's the right thing to do, and we have done it in the past. It's never been explained that way at all.
I look for board direction on that.
It's a piece of paper.
Give the piece of paper.
I'll make a motion that we accept the retirement request from Valerie West, effective June 5, 2015, and that an appropriate resolution be prepared to commend her for her 15 years of service to the district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, board member comments and reports. Any over here? Nope. No reports, all right.
We will after.
Comment?
I got a comment.
All right.
I got this cool shirt on.
Yeah. Reclaiming the promise.
I'll do that under that, under my comments, I guess. I just wanted to remind everybody that the PTA Council is having their annual honorary service award tea on this Sunday, April 12, and that it's a great time when employees, parents, teachers, anyone that has been given an award is invited to come, and lots of good food, so please mark your calendar for Sunday between 2:00 and 4:00, and come and celebrate those that help our schools.
All right, we have no speaker cards on the closed session items, so.
Yes, we do.
I'll confer.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Linda Dart, AFT 3267. We were, I think everyone here was really happy to hear about all the LCAP meetings going on across the district, and we want to commend Ms. McCulley for her excellent work in bringing those meetings to the public and getting everyone involved. And we know that all this wonderful help at the schools comes about through the funding of Prop 30, which the public voted for. We really appreciate that. Because of that, we are able to add teachers, add coaches, and several administrative positions to our district. And we're glad that these funds are being used for the students for which they're meant for. But keeping all that in mind, we want to leave you with this thought, that you not forget that the employees through the last lean years have made sacrifices, and it is a difficult economy to live in here. And the fact that our lowest-paid teachers, the preschool teachers, need our support to do something about their salary schedule so that they have something to aim for in the future, longevity and extra steps in their schedule. And also to say that as great as it is, and it is really great to have money instead of cuts, right, that we are thrilled, but even so, we all know that it's just not enough to do all the things we want to do. And I would like us to think towards the future where we may have to come to the public again and ask for help for specific things, such as things that people have asked for, a science teacher in every school, a librarian in every school. Maybe those kinds of programs for students could be supported by the community with some kind of parcel tax. We're going to have to think about that in the future.
That's true. All right, thanks for those comments. So at this time, we will convene to close session at 9:08, and we'll have a short break to clean up.
Sign resolutions.